Well, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the April 7th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. And I'd like to start off with, first of all, a prayer by Mayor Pro Tem, Senator Craig, and after which will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, Ms. Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please pray, "O Lord, I am so very thankful for this day, for this time, and for this night and this hour. I ask that you be with us tonight, that you will open our minds, that you will guide us as we work together for the betterment of the whole. Be with all of our citizens, bless them with strength and courage. I pray this in your holy name. Amen."
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, item C is the adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second here, sir.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. Item D's approval of the minutes. First, we'll take the regular council meeting on March the 3rd. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, the other meeting was March 17th. Council meeting is, or my second?
Second here, sir.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay. Before, you come on down and let me just say this, if you would. Awards, ceremonies, and Promotion Committee have two proclamations, and so call on Councilman Kimball. While he's coming down, let me say that, Flip, it's a good time for you to come in the room. I think I speak for most everyone in saying that we were pretty well represented in the NCAA finals and by several schools and colleges in North Carolina, and I'm referring to North Carolina. But I want to say that I think that it's the proper time to say that we certainly are very proud of one of ours, Duke University, winning as national champions. Whether that makes you happy, it certainly made a lot of us happy. Yeah, well, okay, so, but, and Rusty and Flip, I'm sorry, I mean, you know, Clemson's still playing, aren't they? But, oh, good, okay. But I just wanted to bring that up. Okay, Councilman Kimball, proclamation.
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we have two very deserving proclamations dealing with housing and development. And I'd like to call up Ms. Myra Nichols. I believe she's going to be accepting these proclamations on behalf of our city. Okay, we have a proclamation this evening, starting off with, "Equal housing opportunity is a right guaranteed to all Americans under Title VIII of the 1968 Civil Rights Law. And whereas each year since the enactment of the Fair Housing Law, the federal government has designated April as Fair Housing Month, and whereas the citizens of Gastonia and Gaston County are encouraged in the effort to ensure that fair housing opportunity is a reality for all. And whereas the enactment of the Fair Housing Law provides an opportunity for all citizens of Gastonia and Gaston County to rededicate themselves to the principles of free choice and to reacquaint themselves with the rights and responsibilities that are theirs under the law. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Gastonia hereby proclaims the month of April 2015 as Fair Housing Month in Gastonia, and encourage the people of Gastonia to join in reaffirming the obligation of commitment of fair housing opportunities for all. In witness whereof, I hereunto have set my hand and caused the corporate seal of the city of Gastonia, North Carolina, to be affixed this seventh day of April 2015 by our honorable mayor, John D. Bridgman, and our clerk, Virginia Crichton." Myra?
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognizing Fair Housing Month is very important for our community and also for community development, being able to make sure that every person has the right to make it for choice in where they want to live. Because housing also impacts a lot of people's quality of life, as to where they work, where their children go to school, and also their access to some community sources. So it's very, very important that we make sure that everybody has a free choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Myra.
Thank you. And we have a second proclamation this evening, dealing with National Community Development CD Week. And whereas the week of April 6th to the 11th, 2015, has been designated as National Community Development Week. The city of Gastonia is a participant in the Community Development Block Grant Program, which funds a myriad of social service, economic development, and housing programs in this community. And whereas April 6th to the 11th, 2015, marks the 41st anniversary of the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program, and the 29th anniversary of the National Community Development Week. Whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program has operated since 1975 to provide local governments with the resources required to meet the needs of persons of low and moderate income, and the CDBG funds are used by neighborhood-based nonprofit organizations to address pressing neighborhood and human service needs. And whereas CDBG program funding has developed a strong network of relationships between this local government, residents, and the many nonprofit agencies that provide services and help make possible our commitment to those neighborhoods. And whereas this community recognizes that the CDBG program is a partnership of federal, state, and local government, business, nonprofit, and community efforts, and relies heavily on the dedication of and goodwill of our combined efforts. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the city of Gastonia hereby proclaims the week of April 6th to 11th, 2015, as Community Development Week in Gastonia, and encourages the citizens of Gastonia to join in recognizing the Community Development Block Grant Program and the important role it plays in our community. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and caused the corporate seal of the city of Gastonia, North Carolina, to be affixed this seventh day of April 2015 by our honorable mayor, John D. Bridgman, and Virginia L. Crichton, our city clerk. Myra?
Thank you. Please.
Of course, we get community development funds every year, and we are grateful that it keeps going up every year. And this year, we had about a $25,000 increase with our coming year in July. These funds are very important for our community. We fund our 108 loans. That helps economic development for our community. It also helps with our continuing care program that helps the homeless. And we're proud to say that come July, we'll be able to open up our rehab program for the citizens of Gastonia again.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Both of them.
The adoption of both proclamations.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please? Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Okay, moving along, item F is public expression. Each person's limited to a total of five minutes of speaking time. The sign-up sheet has one person that's asked to speak is Reverend Kenneth Fleming. Reverend Fleming?
Let me say, good evening, Mr. [inaudible].
Good evening, sir.
City Council.
Evening, sir.
This is more so like an announcement. My name is Reverend Kenneth Fleming, and I reside in Ward 4. And what this is, is that I'm associated with a group called the African Concerned Command of Highland. And what that is, is a group of young men who have got together and decided that the men of the community, we're trying to get them to step up and be more visible in the community. We have done several things already, but I just want to stress this because I don't think I'll be here at the next council meeting. I have a baseball up high, so I'll be out of town. What we're having on May 9th is, and some of you may already have this, is our first annual building a prosperous and healthy Highland community, a Health and Resource Expo. That will be held at the Highland, I'm sorry, the Urban Recreation Center. And we'll be using the outer part of the baseball field, soccer field, whatever, and the inside. So we're inviting you all to come, and there's a package that we plan to, if you don't have it, that we will give you all. Also, I would like to announce that on April the 16th, that there will be a meeting at Urban Center. This is something started when they were having a community meeting with the police department. And they decided that they wanted to get dialogue started between the youth and the police department. And so there was a meeting set up in January, but due to bad weather, it was canceled. So Captain Bowie called, asked me was I going to reschedule it. So we did. It would be held April the 16th at Urban Center at 6:30. So I just wanted to briefly announce those two announcements there. We invite your support to help us in to better our community, not only the community of Highland, but the community of Gastonia. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Reverend Fleming. That's well put, and we certainly back you. Thank you. Okay, that's all I have on public expression. We'll go to the consent agenda, please, item 1 through 4. Question? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay. opposed? Thank you very much. That takes care of the consent agenda. Now, on to the regular agenda. Public hearing, a special exception to the flood ordinance. Subject hearing involves considering the granting of a special exception under section 7.6.1.17.A11, I remember that, of the Flood Hazard Overlay District to permit fill on real property along New Heart Creek Tributary for a Hilton Garden Inn. The subject property is owned by SRI LLC and is located on the east side of Cox Road between I-85 and Franklin Boulevard. The Gastonia Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve the special exception. Presentation by Mr. Rusty Boss, Director of Engineers, City Engineer.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item for you, as the mayor explained, is a special exception to our flood ordinance. Essentially, there's a hotel that plans to build on this site. This is the site that's behind the Olive Garden and the Ruby Tuesdays. In order to do this, they're essentially planning on putting some fill in the flood plain to hold up the parking lot that's going to be on the eastern side of the hotel. The main challenge with this site is that, right now, they're planning on, to do this, they're planning on putting a wall inside the flood plain. This obviously raises some issues and some concerns. We'll make sure that that wall is properly designed during the plan review phase. We still haven't seen the actual site plan, site plan submittals with the wall design. So there'll be opportunities down the road to get into that and make sure that that thing is actually constructed appropriately for where it's going to sit. We have gone over the hydraulic model that shows that the flood elevation does not rise. Staff review finds that the model is accurate and comprehensive, and we're satisfied with it. Robert Billings with New River Engineering is here to read the five findings of fact that's required in the ordinance, and I'll let him do that, and then we'll take any questions that council may have.
Good evening, council. My name is Robert Billings. I'm a professional engineer in North Carolina, professional hydrologist, and a certified floodplain manager in North Carolina also. My office address is 2347 Old NC 27, Mount Holly, North Carolina. And as Rusty said, I'll read the findings of fact that is required in your floodplain Number one, the granting of a special exception will not create a danger that fill or construction materials may be swept onto lands other than those for which the exception is granted to the injury of others. Fill on the site is necessary for the construction of the proposed Hilton Garden Inn. Sediment erosion control devices will be installed to minimize being swept onto other properties. Construction materials will be stored on the west side of the project site and away from Dewards Creek Tributary D6 and out of the floodplain. Now, just right there, Tributary D6, that is a tributary come in to Dewards Creek, and D6 is how it's named in the FEMA floodplain map. Number two, granting of a special exemption will not substantially increase the probability of flooding or erosion damage and thereby create a danger of life to life and property. The eastern edge of the project site is in the 100-year floodplain on the Tributary D6. Portions of the parking area will be in the floodplain. The hotel structure will not be in the floodplain. A flood study based on FEMA-accepted standard-step backwater computer model was developed for this project. The flood study shows the proposed Hilton Garden Inn will neither increase nor decrease flood risk in this area. Number three, the granting of a special exemption will not result in any increase in flood levels during the base flood discharge. A small, as I said before, a small portion of the project site is in the 100-year floodplain of the tributary. The base flood elevation, the computed elevation for the 100-year flood event in the project area is approximately 694.5. That's the base flood elevation for the 100-year event. The regulatory flood elevation is therefore 696.5. City of Gastonia, in your flood ordinance, you require two-foot freeboard. So that is your 100-year elevation plus two feet for any living space elevations. The finished post-hotel is 702, 702, which is 5.5 feet above the regulatory flood protection elevation and 7.5 feet above the base flood elevation. The project will not increase the base flood elevation. Number four, the granting of a special exemption will not have an adverse impact upon properties upstream or downstream other than those for which the exemption is granted. The project will not have an adverse impact on adjacent properties. The proposed Hilton Garden Inn stormwater infrastructure was considered and constructed along the stormwater infrastructure of existing properties. Changes to the existing stormwater system are not necessary. Number five, the granting of a special exception will not result in any fill being placed within any designated floodway unless requirements of Section 17-93-F13-V8 are met. As part of this project, fill in the floodplain is required due to required need for a certain number of parking spaces. Portions of the toe of the field of slope in the parking lot fill may be in the floodway. The study proves that the proposed development, including the fill for the parking area, will not increase base flood elevations and therefore meets the requirements of Section 17-93-F13-V8. And those are the five findings of fact. Open.
Before we continue, in my haste to get you up here, I'll declare the hearing open, since you've given us the facts. Any questions of either of these, of Robert or Rusty? Anyone? Yes, sir. Mr. Kimball, got to curling.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Rusty, I would just like, if we could, to make a rough comparison with the elevation of this particular parking lot versus the one, the parking lot that's occupied or services the Chuck E. Cheese restaurant a little bit below there. And I've taken note on a number of occasions that there has been, you know, substantial flooding to the point where I believe motor vehicles have been damaged where they were not moved in an appropriate time, given the rise of the floodwaters. Where are we between that comparison of the two properties there, if you know?
Working off of the map that's given, I don't have an exact survey elevation here. I was looking at that earlier today.
Okay.
I just don't remember. This is showing what appears to be an elevation of 687.7, and Robert, you were saying it was going to be 690?
Yeah, we're about two to three feet higher, something in that area. The finished floor of the, the finished floor of the parking lot, the finished floor of the post-hotel is 702, which is five feet above.
So, well, from 687 to 702, so we're talking, what, 13, 14 feet?
Great, okay.
Between the hotel and the best I can read off the map.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you.
Rusty, comparing, you know, let's talk about this compared to the circumstance that we had at the Sprint AAA Car Care Center retaining wall there. So this is going to be a retaining wall, again, to support the elevation of the parking lot, okay? And we had a situation at that other location, so what's different?
At the other location, the wall was built outside of the floodplain. It was actually above the floodplain. What happened is the creek kind of meandered over and ate out the footing underneath the wall. So the floodplain is essentially an elevation. During the 100-year flood, that's the elevation that the water should be at. And they built the wall just about that high up above it. So as the creek ate out from the bank, the footing and then the wall came down, or, well, the wall didn't come down, but it started to stack. In this instance, what we're going to propose to the developers, that the footing for that wall actually go down into the ground, that we actually put the footing of that below the water line of the creek, so as the creek migrates over, it, the creek actually rubs up against the wall rather than eating the footing underneath it, and the footing's kind of in the bedrock under the creek. And then we're also probably going to look at putting what we call scour protection there also, some pretty big heavy rock, kind of like what they have out there on that site now, along the flow line of the creek to kind of absorb some of that energy and some of that erosiveness and protect the wall.
Sounds good. On this view, where is the stormwater detention or retention located right now?
This site was developed comprehensively for the Chuck E. Cheese, Olive Garden, the Ruby Tuesdays, the Starbucks, the Buffalo Wild Wings, and this hotel site.
Okay.
There's a large, I guess, a universal stormwater detention pond behind the Starbucks, and it was sized appropriately for this site also.
Okay.
So they're already actually retaining this site when they built that basin.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rusty, this D6 creek, where is it? Is it the blue line that goes through here?
On the map you have shown, it's actually the, if I can get the, I don't know. So the blue line is the floodplain.
Okay.
The red line is the edge of the wall that you can see inside the floodplain. The creek is actually over here on the property line.
So it's pretty far from where the wall's going to be sitting?
The creek has to move a pretty far way for it to get to that wall. Yes, sir.
Now, is that towards, that's not towards the Olive Garden, that's on the other side?
Yes, sir. Again, the Olive Garden sits up here, parking lot for the Olive Garden, and the parking lot for Ruby Tuesdays is in this area, and then this is I-85 up here.
Okay, so it's directly behind it?
Yes.
Okay. So it'll be pretty far away. It looks like it's going to be several feet?
Oh, 100.
100 feet?
Yeah. Yeah, that floodplain is very wide.
So that's going to be right beside the Starbucks?
The, across the street.
No.
The Starbucks is sitting down in this area, on the south side of that road.
I don't see your finger on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is the road that goes to Starbucks?
Yeah.
And Starbucks is sitting right in this area?
And then Wild Wings down there.
And then Wild Wings.
Mm-hmm.
Where's the room?
I, we haven't seen that yet. They haven't submitted that, so we honestly don't know how many rooms they're intending.
No, no, I mean, I want to know where it's going to be now.
This is where they're saying the hotel building will sit.
Track a hotel.
It's east of the car.
Yes, that's correct.
There's a lot of room down there.
Yes.
Yep. Ms. Craig?
Just one clarification, that I'm reading this correctly, because I think I heard you say y'all haven't seen any designs or anything.
No, not yet.
Hasn't gone through the review process. One, two, in the last paragraph on Exhibit 5-4, kind of the second sentence maybe, it says, "Any special exemptions granted may be revoked by the city council should any conditions and safeguards imposed be violated." Okay, so when you see the, it goes through the review process, and if this exception, exemption is granted and it is not fulfilled, then the city will take the authority to revoke the exemptions?
The city council has that authority to revoke that exemption. This exemption that we're asking you to grant, we should never get to that point. In all honesty, we should handle that through the design review place and the engineer that's designing the walls. You know, they will recognize seriousness of what they're talking about.
Well, I mean, and I respect that, and that, but I just wanted it for the record that that is part of the narrative that we have.
If they were to not cure the problems, the staff would put together an agenda item and put it back on the agenda just like this, and you'd basically revoke it.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Pierce, on them.
Rusty, I understand that this was part of the bigger plan when that site was first being proposed and developed with all the other stuff. So I'm assuming this was taken into consideration, at least part of that. I guess we would not have foreseen the need to build a small retaining wall, but I know a hotel's been talked about here for quite a while, but, and I brought this up back when we were doing the Starbucks, and I know I'm the only one that voted against Starbucks.
You voted out.
Against it, probably, but it's not because I don't like Starbucks, and it's not because I don't like a hotel, but, call me simple, but you take an area that contains water, like Dewards Creek, and when you add water to that, it has to go somewhere, and we keep building on where this water is supposed to go. Okay, that's fine, you can do that. But water still has to go somewhere. And in every single report for every single building, it says it's not going to have an effect on anybody anywhere. That simply cannot be true. The water has to go somewhere, and it's going to affect somebody.
Yes.
All right, so are we downstream where there's residents that complain all the time about the silt and everything washing down, and are we taking that into consideration each time we narrow the gap where this water's going to go?
There's two separate things going on here. The one is that there's new roofs, there's new parking lots, there's new impervious, so as it rains, more runoff is generated.
Correct.
All right, so that's that giant detention basin. That's the structure that handles all of that and does a very slow release of all that water. It's a big thing, it catches a lot of water, it's got a real tiny outlet, so just a little bit of water, you try and mimic what the original rainfall flow would have been, from before the development. So you size that outlet to be very small to mimic that smaller amount prior to the development. So that's the purpose of that stormwater detention, is to try and reduce that volume of water that the downstream residents are seeing. The special exception is really the encroachment into the floodplain. So now you're talking about, how do you take a pipe that's 100 feet, or across that, that's 100 feet wide, and you squish it in 20 feet, how do you still handle that without that water going up? The simplest explanation that I can give you is that you make it very smooth compared to what it is right now. If you go out there and look at it now, it's a very vegetated channel, it's got a lot of falling trees, a lot of overgrowth and bushes and shrubs and rocks and stuff that are in it. So you take all that out and you put something smooth in there, like the face of a wall, and that water actually moves a little faster. So what you're doing is you're trading volume for velocity, and that's the mechanics of it. Maybe a little oversimplified, but essentially, that's what's happening.
And, that's fine, I mean, it's not that I don't get it, it's just, I don't care if you make it go slower or faster. This water has to go somewhere, and we keep shrinking and shrinking and shrinking, and you said, well, we make it go faster. Okay, well, if that water's going faster, a greater volume is traveling through there at a quicker pace.
It's the same amount of water.
But it's going through at a quicker pace.
Right, yes.
Which means it fills the detention pond quicker, which means the detention pond has a greater chance of overflowing.
But it's still seeing the same amount of water in a certain amount of time, the detention basin is sized for that amount of water.
Yeah, I'm not following that part. If I take this cup and slowly trickle something into it, it takes me two minutes to fill it up. I just dump it, it takes a second to fill it up before it's overflowing. Same way with the detention pond. If you've got the same amount of water, but it's going at a faster rate, that pond is going to fill faster. And as you mentioned, the outlet for it is small and will only let so much water out at a time. If it fills up quickly, it's either going to go over that outlet, or it's going to back up into all the or it's going to back up into all these parking lots and do property damage. And then a year from now, when we have a great big rain, we're all going to be sitting here because somebody's going to say, well, the city approved it. And just like we did with the wall at Sprint, you know, that was approved at one point. It seemed like a great idea, you know, retaining wall. I just, I'm not voting against this, don't worry. It's just, I want to raise my objections again because there again, maybe I'm just way too simple. But when you have a certain area that water's supposed to go through and you shrink that area, that water's got to go somewhere. And no one will ever say, yeah, it's going to affect, so. I've said my piece, we'll move on.
Okay, Mr. Simples, Mr. McKeer.
Aren't you the same engineer at Starbucks?
Yes, sir, I am the same engineer at Starbucks.
Do you have any problems over there?
No.
No problem?
No.
And Mr. Fox, a question. Why don't we just see this, just a resolution, just to say, we aren't going to approve any more buildings on the floodplain. Because they're floodplains, and this is not, they don't even think about building on the floodplain. If the city's not going to approve. There's a lot of land around here they can build on, and it's not a floodplain.
You know, this council, I believe the city of Gastonia was the first one to, in North Carolina, or one of the first one to, back in the seventies, I think, to pass a no-rise ordinance. And that the state of North Carolina, if you look, community after community has adopted that type of ordinance. I think we were ahead of the bell curve. But at the time, that was also perceived to be a balanced approach to allow developers, you know, if they're having problems with getting the site to fit just right, there is a mechanism to allow them to do this if they go through the process of proving that they're not going to damage downstream properties or increase the flood elevation. That just seemed to be the, I, you have to assume at the time that was the best decision that they made with everything that they were trying to do.
Well, are there some properties that, in the city, that would be not allowed to be filled and built on? Or any floodplains that may be eligible to be looked at?
You know, the one that's most critical is called the floodway. There's the floodplain, the floodway. The floodway is tighter, it's closer to the center of the creek. That's usually your streets, your culverts and street crossings. Those are incredibly restricted. And we do draw a pretty hard, fast line there. And it is limited to the street crossings, that's where we see those happen. You know, whether council decides to actually chase that or not.
Anything else? Campbell, Dr. Curley.
I would just want to address Mr. McKeer's question. On the floodplain ordinance, city Gastonia has very tough floodplain ordinance. And I work all over North Carolina. And I was also the chair of the North Carolina Association of Floodplain Managers for several years. So I know how a lot of them work. In eighty percent of the communities, maybe ninety percent of the communities in North Carolina, this would not go through any kind of process like this. The rule is if most of the places in the North Carolina model ordinance is kind of states, if you build in the floodplain, you just have to get a permit from the local jurisdiction, you don't have to do the flood study. If you get into the floodway, then you have to. City Gastonia, they have said, if you're in a floodplain at all, you must do the flood study and everything, it's very restrictive. Now, going another step forward, there is other communities, Indian Trail, I helped write that ordinance, that states no building in the floodplain. And you can definitely do that. But then the problem becomes, they say, okay, we want to put in a greenway, or the town wants to do something. And then they have to go in front of their onboard and get a variance from their own ordinance. So, you know, it's kind of restrictive in that way. And one other point I want to bring to Mr. Purcell is you will always see flood studies that work here. That come through the board, because flood studies that do not work will not get this far. So if I'm working somewhere in Gastonia and someone comes to me with a type of project, and I take a look at it and there's no way in the world it's going to work, I say, this is not going to work, you know, you just can't do this. And so I see that side, but you would never see that side because you're going to only see the ones that do work.
Jim?
Thank you. Rusty, to go back to Councilman Pearsall's example, doesn't, doesn't really the question here we're dealing with, it actually turns on volume, not speed, correct?
A combination of both, but how you handle that volume.
Okay. Sir, did you want to say something? Okay, thank you.
Just in response to Mr. Pearsall, you know, this has been the age-old question. And sitting on this council for a while, this has been debated over the years. And it really is, it's what the other gentlemen have said so far, it's either do it or don't do it. If you choose not to do it, then, you know, hold the line and not do it. If you're going to do it, do it right. I think probably we do it as good as we can do it. But I totally agree with you. You know, the water's got to go somewhere. And of course, you know, water is a destructive force and it's going to change. You know, we can look at the creeks and the creek beds around us, they're constantly changing, they're going to continue to change. And we just do the best we can with the situation we have. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Rusty, this is all predicated on the fact that it's all mathematical with that retention pond and all. I mean, they figured this out because they knew that there was going to be a hotel that was going to be going there. And now, it's all figured in way in advance.
Yes.
So I would like to make a motion. Seeing that the planning commission voted unanimously for this special exception that is recommended by the staff to approve this request for the special exception to place Phil within the designated flood zone.
Second here.
Yeah, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Well, we'll close it. Okay, there is a motion that said it closed up here, okay? And all in favor? Okay, now, the motion is to approve the exception to the flood ordinance as presented.
And accept the findings of fact.
Correct.
Right.
I will second.
Okay, discussion? Well, you made the motion, you seconded, okay. Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you, thank you, gentlemen, thank you very much. Item six is a Add Citizen Contribution Assistance Program to the Off-Ride Away Stormwater Program. A presentation by Mr. Matt Bernhardt, Director of Public Works Utilities, Mr. Robert Kloninger, Stormwater Utility Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. It occurred to us after placing this item on that before we had the stormwater staff present the economic assistance program for your consideration, that we actually needed to present the stormwater staff. So I wanted to introduce your Stormwater Utility Administrator to you. And if you'll bear with me for just a moment. Robert Kloninger is our Stormwater Utility Administrator. He's been with us since November. He is formerly with Charlotte Mecklenburg Stormwater Services, the county stormwater operation over across the river. And he is a Gaston County native. He has a degree in industrial technology and construction from the finest educational institution in the state, Appalachian State University. That was for Rusty. And has multiple certifications in stormwater from NC State and from NC Deaner. And he resides in Gaston County and operates a farm with his family. I'm going to turn it over to Robert to present the program.
Welcome.
Not too many of them in the county.
A handful.
Yeah, handfuls, right.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, glad to be here, thank you for your time. And the item for you guys are, it's the Stormwater Right-Away Program, Citizen Contribution Assistance. As we know, with Stormwater Off-Ride Away Improvement Project, now it's a ten percent contribution from the citizens. And, you know, we've kind of, we've had one instance as of now, as far as, you know, a citizen. They've been approved through our stormwater team, our citizens advisory panel. And it's their time to get their improvement done. However, they do not have the ten percent to follow through and make the improvements. And with that being said, we put this, pose this for you guys to approve to basically, given the table within the document states, incomes, numbers of peoples in a home or in a household, would determine whether they're eligible for the ten percent, I guess somewhat, a waiver for that particular citizen. And obviously, it would be run very similar to the GEAR program offered by the Electrical Department, whereas it's facilitated through the Community Development Department. And, you know, they would provide the proper documentation to Community Development to determine whether they're eligible for the assistance for the program or not. And that's how it would be determined. And staff's recommendations is for you guys to approve this, to kind of, to give us this component in the program to better serve all citizens in the city.
Question, Mr. Kloninger.
No, I applaud the staff for this. This is something I believe Councilman Kimball or Gallagher brought up, not being able to, for some residents that would not be able to afford that. I just had a question, and Robert, it may not be for you, or I don't know who can answer it. But just looking at the income levels earlier, for one person, their annual income cannot exceed fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty. Is that not kind of low? I mean, let's say, the project we had talked about before was ten thousand dollars. So if that resident is going to have ten percent, they'd have to pay a thousand dollars. If they're only making fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars a year, do you think they have a thousand dollars to spend on a stormwater project? That's almost a month of their income. So that was my only concern, is that these amounts may be set too low. Do we, because there's probably a lot of people that are going to be excluded from this program that can't afford to have the work done, simply because the income level is so extremely low. I don't know.
You mean someone with fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, then is eligible for the ten percent match? So.
No, I'm, the way I was reading it, maybe I misunderstood it, but if you make over, or your annual income is over fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty, you don't qualify.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
You know, if it's a hundred dollars over that, you don't qualify.
Right.
Right.
If you're making fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars a year, and I'm assuming that's on some type of fixed income, be it social security, disability, you don't have a thousand dollars to pay to the city for a stormwater project. That's almost a month of your income. I mean, am I thinking off balance if I am?
That's why we want to do this, they can't afford it. But you're saying if they make fifteen, they won't be able to get it either.
Right. But that's what I'm saying, you know, it's great that we're doing this program, and I applaud this program, I think we need it. But at these income levels, can they still afford it? I mean, you might as well say it's ten thousand.
Where'd the numbers come from, Robert?
These numbers come directly from the Community Development. The same, it's modeled basically after the GEAR, Gaston's Electrical Assistant Resource Program for, through the Electrical Department. So these are numbers, the source is, you know, they're some sort of a census-type deal through some, something that Meyer does. But these numbers are the same as the GEAR program from the Electrical Department.
Mr. Campbell, Dr. Curley.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple, I guess, quasi-comment questions on this. First of all, what I see with this program, and you're, I think you're going in the right direction, Councilman Pearsall. And what we didn't address, and maybe this was through haste or because it was in, is this is part of the GEAR program. I look at this program being a little bit different in scope than your electric. Okay, to start off, okay? Can we build something in, kind of what you're talking about, Councilman, where they would have a specified length of time in addition to that ten percent? You know what, I'm hearing you on the thousand dollars. But if we could do that over, say, X amount of months or years, that would reduce that. And that's, and again, I'm not sure why that's not in here, but it could be because of, it is kind of mirroring the GEAR program. And obviously, a stormwater renovation or improvement has different ramifications than you can't turn your light on, you know? So that was one of my questions, is in addition to the dollar figure, is there something where they could go ahead and sign a document that would allow them, as you're talking about? Because I get the whole fourteen thousand, one thousand, that's a heck of a lot of money. But maybe at a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars, I'm just throwing that out, folks, just for, you know, that could make it more doable and someone wouldn't lose their spot on the list. Because, and that comes to my next question, they couldn't afford the whole enchilada right away. But you know what, I can afford to make annual monthly or monthly payments or equal monthly payments, okay? Secondly, does this affect also where they are on the list? We know that when we first brought up the ten percent matching, that we had some challenges there. I know that I had them in my ward, you had them in yours, Todd, where some people languished on the list for ten, twelve years before they could move forward with this. Where does the, does this assistance, where does it place these folks?
As far as, at the time, currently, we only have one instance where this is applicable. And right now, the individual, she is just holding steady on the list. We haven't dropped her, we haven't moved her down, we haven't, we've just been kind of holding the line with her, you know, and until we could kind of put this program on the ground and possibly assist this individual, depending on their income, based on these tables.
So in other words, it would, lack of a term, she worked her way up on the list and now theoretically, this is her time on the list?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, and just how we wanted to maybe structure, if that's possible, some types of a payment plan, is all I have. Thank you.
So the GEAR program, and I agree with what you're saying, Councilman Kimball, the GEAR program is based on what someone is needing on kind of a monthly basis. I mean, it's an on, and an emergent basis. So it's, so it's obviously smaller dollar figures, you know, and you may be eligible more than one time. You know, where this is a single-time eligibility. But we're talking about a capital expense.
Yeah.
Which is significantly different. So I'm not so sure we're using the right methodology to get to where we want to be. So I'm in agreement with what both you individuals are saying. So what we really need to do is take this back and look at this a little harder. Because if a project, you know, again, is more than ten thousand dollars, which very likely could be.
Sure.
You know, then we're talking about even more dollars. But I do really like the idea that, you know, there be some type of a scheduled payment amount. I mean, amortizes over a period of time. And then the other question is, is what do we do in the case of tap fees? When, you know, when someone petitions and we're, you know, we're bringing people online for additional sewer services and things like that? I mean, some of those tap fees get fairly expensive. Do we not bill them on their utility bill and over a period of time?
We have, that's.
So why wouldn't we do that in this situation? Because that's a capital expense.
Yeah.
Councilman, we certainly can entertain that type of thing if that is the council's interest. In fact, if the council would like to refer it back to committee, then we certainly can work on it there.
I think we got some great opportunities here. I think this is really good, the intent is really strong, and we just need to tweak it a little bit more.
I think so.
Don't you think?
The other thing I think, Dave, is maybe this is not the best comparative other, using the GEAR program.
Right, right.
And maybe what you're saying about the sewage tap or something like that is more applicable to a capital improvement versus a consumable.
I think it's a combination of the two. It's, you know, setting those income limits at what may be more appropriate and then setting a fee schedule or a payment schedule that would be doable over time for individuals. You know, because there is, it's a little elective in the sense that, you know, you elect sometimes to tap onto the sewer system. You elect to have this done, granted, there's damage being done to your property, but you're electing to try to, you know, remedy that. So it can be scheduled and requires some advanced planning on the purpose. I mean, you know, somebody might have to save up some money, too, you know. So where can we find a happy place for everybody?
I agree, and I think you might get, if you do something like the, you. I agree, and I think you might get, if you do something like the, you, let's go back to the ten thousand dollar example, and they're having to pay a thousand dollars. You might get more people to buy into it if they found out they can pay, you know, a hundred dollars over the next however many months. They may say, oh, okay, well, that's doable, I'll do it. Whereas if you go to them and say, well, you're going to have to pay a thousand dollars, like, I make fourteen thousand dollars a year, I'm not paying a thousand dollars, y'all crazy. So you might get more people to buy into it if we can spread that, and I know it doesn't get, the funds and the, that we have for this program are very limited, and the object here is to get as much back in there so that we can do more. And I know that spreads that out over time, but I think, once you get the program set up, if you've got payments going into it consistently, then I think we'd find a good balance there, so.
Mr. Kimball, Ms. Craig.
Thank you. I guess, I agree, Councilman, and I guess the other thing that this can do is if we get this tweaked properly, folks that are on the waiting list would have the ability to start, as you're indicating, they know it's on the horizon, and they can start to save up for it, you know, and build that into their budget, monthly budget, annual budget, something like that, where the whole lump sum could be insurmountable on a good day. So that's, that's my final comment. Thank you.
If I, if I read this right, which I could be reading it wrong, okay, but is, if somebody comes in at fourteen one fifty, okay, and they have a ten thousand dollar project, then we're going to waive that ten, that thousand dollars, okay?
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we're waiving that. But now, if we increase that fourteen one fifty to, say, fifteen thousand, okay, then the 10 percent is not waived.
Correct.
Is that right? Is that what we're saying?
Uh huh.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to understand, is that if we change these numbers, then the 10 percent will not be waived, whereas if they, or maybe it could be, I don't know, maybe it's, maybe it's a different percentage or something, I don't know. But then you get into some other things, but if that's what we're saying, I understand that, okay?
We'll take this back, and we may even come back with a variety of
Right.
options for you. You can do it the way we've done with water and sewer, and you make payments over time. You can also layer it, that you're, you know, if you're making this much, you pay this, if you're making a little more, you pay that. So we'll get some heads together, come up with some proposals, let everybody look at it, and we'll get it right together.
There's just one thing I would like to just add, is that I brought this forth because there is a lady out there with her husband who's in really dire need. I mean, her house, when it starts raining and the spring rains are going to be coming, her house looks like a moat, and it's, it's imperative. I mean, she's, she's working part-time, her husband's on oxygen, our church has put up a ramp there and stuff. I mean, she's really needing this. And I would like to see if we could maybe possibly put it through committee and put a caveat on here, because all those items you guys had brought up are valid and great. But I think we should leave some room here to say discretion to the city manager, where maybe he could come in and see what the, is going on within the home itself, how much money they're bringing in and that type of thing, and give him the ability to say, well, with these people, they, I see the need for it. You know, I would like to see the application, I don't know how you apply for it, but that's one thing I'd like to see on it. But I don't know if we should leave it, have a spot B in here, give an ed or any city manager in the future discretion, where they can waive the 10 percent fee for a citizen who's in dire need.
The, getting, getting a good number over a period of time creates fairness and equity, and it's easy to administer if it's, you know, because everybody's situation's different. Whenever we're doing income, in Community Development, for instance, we use their taxes. We verify, you know, you have to submit your information on exactly what you're making. And if you're making too much money, then you don't qualify. And so it's, that is a longstanding practice that we do. If you would give it too much flexibility, it's up to Myra to kind of take a look and all this, it, you know, where, where one person might do something completely different than another. So let us try one more time at trying to get this, this right. I don't know if that particular situation fits these incomes, do you know?
No.
Yeah, see, I don't know either. So we, right, we don't know?
No.
So even if we go through this, sometimes maybe people are getting money through investments and other things like that, and that may be in social security and maybe some other thing, and it actually may throw them thirty or forty thousand dollars a year. And they say they're not making much money, and it, maybe it's not much, especially compared to their, 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 their cost of living, but it might, this thing still might not help them. Yeah, so what we'll do is come back to the council and through the committee with some choices, and we'll have a good vigorous discussion with it all, and hopefully get it, get it right for everybody.
Your Honor, one, my final, final...
Okay.
Sorry. Ed, when you're doing that, the other thing that maybe we want to think about is, when in the chronology, are we going to be looking at that? When they apply, or when they, I mean, that needs to be spelled out, when they actually, when it's their time on the list, when they're up to that point where we could drop a bulldozer blade tomorrow, or when they apply? Because they, you know, with raises that people get on fixed incomes and stuff, that could theoretically knock someone out that works their way up, and then they say, well, if you would have told me that then, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have applied, or I did, I did, I was making under that, when I did apply, and, you understand? So I think that may be something that we, when you're doing your fact-finding, you want to look at that.
Right. You know, the basic deal is that you're supposed to do participation. And then if you can show at the time of the project
Okay.
that your income is such, then, then you'll fall into this category, I think. Because you're right, there could be, certainly can't have this thing laying out there for four or five years.
Right.
Because things can change.
Sure.
Okay, so it's agreed, you come back with the options and your recommendation.
And can we just, Matt, I wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward. I didn't want you to think we all just threw it back at you, but no, I appreciate this program and what the city and staff has put into it, so thank you.
We, we were looking for, because the reality is that we have a stormwater utility staff of two, we were looking for a mechanism to plug into that wouldn't be, you know, some bury them in paperwork that we could effectively administer, and plugging into CD's program seemed to be a logical one, and also in line with what had been requested, so we'll certainly work on it and bring back some options. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item seven, American Legion trip to Springfield, Massachusetts. Presentation, Mr. Chuck Dallinger, Director of Parks and Cultural Services. Dallinger?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a little bit of background, and I know that all of you know the story, but just a, just a couple of, a couple of tidbits about it. There was 1934, American Legion team from Springfield, Massachusetts, was scheduled to play in Gastonia in a regional tournament, winter going on the World Series. That team had an African-American player on it, and the region and officials, tournament officials in this, here in Gastonia, said the team could play, but the African-American player could not play. The team took a vote, they all decided that if one couldn't play, they were, no one was going to play, and they got back on the train and went back to Springfield, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-one years ago. I'd never heard of that. Mr. Mayor had been here all his life, he'd never heard of it. I could not find anyone who, who knew that story until it was brought to the mayor's attention, it had been written about in a couple of books. And I know that Mayor Bridgman had sent the mayor of Springfield a letter apologizing for that, as first he had known about apologizing for it, and inviting them to come down and play the American Legion team here in Gastonia. They'd been conversing, their mayor up there had invited us to come up and, to come up there and play. There's only one remaining player alive today from that 1934 team, Mr. Tony King, who's ninety-seven years old, lives in Reston. That was their reasoning for our team to go up there this, this year was, was to do that. There's been some back and forth on some things. I've been involved with the local American Legion team, city manager's been involved with some of the organizers and some of the folks in Springfield, Massachusetts. It's a big undertaking, it's a big logistical kind of thing, there was a lot of questions that needed to be answered, especially, can we field a team? When is it? You know, a lot of those things, and that's where we've, we've, where we are today. It's Father's Day weekend, happens to be the weekend right after graduation week, but the American Legion coach says, you know, a trip like this, that he could have enough players that could go up and play. The American Legion guys, I met with them a couple of times, the mayor and Mr. Munn, we all met together, I previously had met with them, and their executive committee, they'd never heard a story, thought it was a good idea to mend relationships, participate in this program. You hear again, what are the logistics? Logistics equal how we're going, how we're going to pay for it, how we're going to get there, and those kind of things. It is a weekend, it is in the middle of their season, it's going to have to be something where you're going to have to fly. I mean, you can't take a bus, it's a fourteen-hour bus ride. You're going to have accommodations and several of those things. So that's where we are today. I'll let Mayor Bridgman and Mr. Munn speak as well, but it's about whether it's endorsed, and endorsing, I haven't talked to anybody that didn't endorse it, didn't think it was a great, it was a great thing, but handling the issues at hand is where, is where we are today. And of course, June is coming up, of course, if and what we do, we need to start making arrangements, and if and what they do, they need to start making arrangements, too. Their celebration is that weekend, it's a, it's a bring-it-home weekend, that's what they call their celebration. It's about baseball, they built a new stadium up there on a 247-acre park close to the Connecticut River, really nice, really nice recreation facilities, really has really nice recreation facilities to do this on. They built a monument in 2002 to those, to those, and dedicated to the team that decided to be a team and be as one and go home. So I'll let Mayor Bridgman and city manager speak from their, their point as well, but I've been the middle man, I deal with the American Legion coaches, the team, and those guys meeting in Memorial Hall, and it's been a pleasure to work with those guys for the thirty, few days, it'll be 36 years that I've been with the city of Gastonia, so they're a pleasurable group to work with, and I've enjoyed that. It is, it is going to be a bigger, a big undertaking.
One of the things, whenever they proposed it to us, because we proposed it to them that we wanted to host it, and they turned around and proposed it to us, we said, can that, can we even field a team? So we ultimately got the coach, they will not actually select their team until early May?
May 15th.
May 15th. So they won't even know who the players are. So whenever you're making a flight reservation, you have to put a hold on it, and you have to put the hundred dollars down for each one of these things. And when you're all said and done with this project, it's probably 10 to 15 thousand dollars to take a team with as many as 18 players, but maybe because of the conflicts, it may only be 12 or 15 players. There are three coaches, there'll be at least a representative or two from the, the American Legion, and also potentially, there were two African-American members recently inducted into the Hall of Fame, who were players in the 1960s. We...
They were the first African-American players to play on a guest, on the post-23 team.
Yeah, and we thought it was appropriate to extend an invitation to them, too. So you put all this together, and then when you talk to the folks in Massachusetts, they said, we think we can take care of your ground transportation, we think, okay? And we think we can take care of a lot of the meals, we think. And we think we can maybe get you places to stay for the whole team and the coaches on campus at their, at Springfield College, they think, they hope. So if all of those happen, then that can kind of bring the cost down. The one cost that's not coming down, of course, is the flight. I mean, that's the biggest, that's the biggest thing there. So it's, and I think Chuck, your, it was about three hundred and seventy dollars round trip or something like that?
When I, when I first started looking at it, it was around 300. I looked at it right before I walked out the door to come up, and it's, you know, 362 is about the, the cheapest. Now, group rate, I understand you can get a little bit, but sometimes they actually charge you more when it's a group. So it's going to be somewhere, logistically, around 350 to 400 dollars per person round trip up and back.
And many, many, many years ago, Legions had a lot of money, had a lot more money. They, all, all, our Legion team and many Legion teams across the country struggle, really, to be able to raise money for baseball. So they're, the idea of raising money in the community, we will try. We will try to get as much private support for this, I think a lot of people will want to do this. But at the, but we're going to have to make some reservations, we're going to have to commit. And at the end of the day, and I think it's like, I think I say this every once in a while, it is baseball season, the city becomes the back, the backstop. I mean, we, you know, there is this issue of, you know, and responsibility. Chuck will have a employee of the city go up or two, so that we're managing that as well. So there is a cost issue to this. And so the city council and the mayor, we need to, I think, decide whether this is something that's important for us, and we, and, and, because we've, we're at this stage now that it's, needs to be officially done on our end, if we're going to do this this year. Now, I actually, I think next year, we would really like them to come down, because that's really what we wanted in the first place, was for them to come down here. And I think that's still an interest of ours to do.
Let me say that I think that you're exactly right, and that you've got the letter there, and as we, we started, back and forth, addressing or talking about the issue, the comment was to come here, as you said, and maybe we can put them together, and of course, but theirs is, at that time, I don't think, maybe they even knew, but that's the big weekend there, as Chuck said, and a new facility, and this and this, and Mr. King, bless his heart, is ninety-seven years old. The, but everything else you said is absolutely correct, too. There's the reality there that, now, the, the American Legion, when we had our meeting, the Legion directors or the guys that were there, they, they, of course, are excluded because they said they'd take care of their own, they'd pay it themselves, I believe, the three or four that were there. I don't know about the coach, well, undoubtedly not, but of course, but, but for the guys that were there, they, they wanted to go, but they'll do it on their own. So I guess, if we'd be glad to answer any questions, this is a, this is a once, one-time situation that, that this is the way it's come about, and it looks like we could do one of two things, or three things. We can, we can sponsor it, and maybe try to ask for donations, which we discussed in the meeting, or we can tell them under the circumstances that, what I thought was, was a problem at first is not, undoubtedly, and you did too, I think, and Ed, is, first of all, we brought up, the, they still go to the beach after graduation, and we just wondered, but they, the coach didn't have a problem with that, and he sounds like he has a lot of authority to tell us that, too. But he didn't feel like that was, that was a problem. In other words, to get to go on this trip, it would be a big, it's big. When this first came out, it came, it was all over public radio and everything a while back up there, and people would call me that, I had two or three that were from Gastonia. Jesse Cole was raised up there, and, but with the Grizzlies, but there were several people that called it, that, from here, and they were just so surprised to be riding down the road and hearing about Gastonia on the, on TV, I mean, on the radio. I, I think that, you're right, I have not heard, I don't know if anybody else has heard of this or not, of the situation. There is a book, John Alexander, of course, is the one that brought it to our attention, but it was written, and it's, we've got those. It would be a very good situation, but we got, our job is... Um, it would be a, a very good situation, but we got, our job is to, is to certainly also be realistic, and, uh, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I really would hope that we didn't use the city's tax money to, to do this, and I've, and try to raise the money privately, and I'll donate two hundred and fifty dollars just myself, and Mr. Mayor, you can donate the balance.
I will pay mine.
You pay, you pay the rest, the ten thousand.
The council simple is what we do.
Yeah, and, uh, but, uh, but, and try to go out to the community and ask for contributions at just a hundred dollars. If we get a hundred and fifty people to give a hundred dollars, and I'll give two fifty, that would raise our money. And, and I would like to see us do it. Now, if there was a, we're in a jam to make some reservations, have to front some money, the city could do that, with the agreement that we would repay the city. But I, I would really like to see us make a strong effort, uh, to do this. This is a good trip, it's, it'd be a lot of fun, and it's got a good purpose, but it would be great if we could, uh, to raise the money privately, and, uh, and, and I'll be the first one to say I'll donate two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Pearson. Thank you.
Porter, that's an excellent idea. Um, yeah, and I, I counter what you say there, Councilman, um, based on the fact that we should go ahead and start making some reservations, and, but for how many people? I mean, I was, the way I was looking at it, started out with twelve baseball players going to fifteen, inviting two other people around, the mayor's gonna go, and it starts jacking up to about twenty, twenty-one people, and it comes out, if it's three hundred and sixty dollars, it comes out to seven thousand, six hundred and two dollars.
Yes, it, it, it's, it's interesting, we're, we're working on a family reunion right now with our family, and the numbers, if the numbers start shifting around, then things, you know, the cost, if, where it can get more expensive if all of a sudden they can't do the, the, the place at the college where they could, all the kids could stay, 'cause that's, that's free. And see, that takes that, that whole cost off, and now you're down just to really the flight, and maybe some incidentals, and maybe they don't catch every meal, uh, because if they're at the dormitories on the college, maybe there is not a breakfast, and we maybe need to, you know, so there is some money there. Now, how many? The coach says there's eighteen, or potentially eighteen on the team, but they might not all go. They're right, because there's conflicts and things, and so maybe only fifteen go, or maybe twelve go, and I'll know Chuck is-
I'm, I'm one of those that plans on eighteen, because, uh, when I, I actually feel, and the coach actually feels this, a little bit this way too, he's actually the Ashbrook High School baseball coach, and I talked to him yesterday at the Easter tournament out at, at Sims Park, and he feels like it's, it's probably gonna be a recruiting tool to, you know, for, for more players, uh, to play, and he actually don't think now that if, if they've got something, you know, if there's a, if there's a plane ticket for them to go somewhere like this, that they're not gonna hesitate coming back from the beach to do it.
So we should, we should put eighteen-
I wouldn't, I would, I would not say twelve, I would say eighteen, uh, eighteen players, three coaches, and, and, and two or three more. I, I'm, I'm a simple guy, and I just do, I do things in twenty-fives and where, where I can calculate it, and, uh, you know, twenty-five times three hundred, seventy-five hundred dollars every time, every time I calculate it, so it's gonna be somewhere between, between sixty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred dollars, uh, at, at those rates, so.
That's for the flight.
What kind of money do we have with the, the mayor and City Council's budget? Is there money in that fund at all?
We, we, we have some.
There's a little over nine thousand dollars.
And travel, and travel, and, and just in that one travel and training account.
Correct. I asked that question today.
Uh, Mr. Campbell, are you raising your hand?
Yes, no, I was, I was-
Okay, Mr. Campbell, Mr. Pearson.
What was, another, maybe, um, potential idea to, to reduce this a little bit is, um, this is a strong story, and, um, obviously, it's not one that's unique just to, um, Gastonia, there was segregation, and these issues were going on right up until Jackie Robinson walked onto the field. I, I would think maybe, Mr. Mayor, if you spoke with a executive of one of the airlines, I, I would be surprised that they wouldn't meet us halfway with some type of a discount. And the reason I say that is, a couple of months ago, if you recall, there was the, um, two police officers that were executed in their cruiser in New York City. The Asian-American gentleman, uh, parents, uh, lived in, um, China, and they could not afford to get here. China Air flew the whole family, round trip, first class, for nothing. They were put up in hotels in New York City for nothing. So I, 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 I think that as you've indicated, when this story gets out, it's a powerful one, and I, I, I would be shocked if, if folks wouldn't meet us halfway on this. So I think it might be worth a phone call or two.
Yes. Pearson.
It's my turn.
Your turn.
Um, I agree with everything that's been said, and obviously, no one sitting up here or probably anybody in, living in Gastonia at this time had anything to do with that decision or the segregation. But it's an opportunity to set something right that was done in our past, and make good with some people, and especially since there's a gentleman still living from the original team, I mean, you know, and he's ninety-six, and knock on wood, he lives quite a bit longer, but we don't know that. So, what I'm hearing is, there are opportunities, talk to the airlines, different things, we were talking on this side about a GoFundMe account-
Yeah.
-you set up online. So I think there's, and, and I know this community, this, you put this story out to the community, and you're gonna have people lining up to, to donate money and support it. Um, but what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is we need to start making reservations, and we need to start the planning now. So that requires a requirement that the money's gonna be there. So I would be in favor of making a motion that the city go ahead and fund this, with the stipulation that either Ed or Chuck, whoever wants to take the reins on this, you know, would oversee some type of private campaign to reimburse the city for the funds that are spent to plan this trip, but I, I think we need to plan it, we need to get it done, we need to make sure these kids, and at the end of the day, these kids, I mean, it's a lesson for them, and they're willing to give up, you know, possibly, uh, summer vacation time, whatever else, because they're excited about it, and, and what a, what a great teaching tool this can be to them too. So, I, I would make the motion that the city fund, and, and I don't, Ash, you may need to help me word it, how do we word this, so that they get the funds they need, but yet we set a motion-
Well, reimbursement.
Advance the money.
The city advanced the money-
Yeah.
And, and that, I would, I would qualify your intent though, Councilman Pearson, when you said that the manager and Mr. Dellinger lead the fundraising campaign, I really think that would be the elected officials-
Right.
We're, we're gonna help you, but the elected officials are gonna be the ones who're gonna carry more weight, asking people for that money.
When I say lead it, they're the ones that-
The logistics.
The logistics, okay.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I'll, I'll be the first to get out, like Councilman McEachran said, I'll, I'll write a check, and I'll go out there and drum up all the money I can, but we, we've gotta have a contact point of somebody that's in charge saying, "Okay, we spent this much, we've collected this much, we have this much," that's who I'm talking about.
And that's always the manager under the City Manager Council, form of government.
Yeah, we, we're gonna, uh, have Rachel involved with, with publicizing, we're, we'll have Melody involved with the, you know, donation monies that are received, unless we work out something through the community foundation, something like what we've done before. We've done things similar to this, but, but it'll be an effort of a lot of us all working together as a community, and the mayor mentioned that this is, was a national story, and I think once this happens, it's gonna be a national story then too, and you know, so you know, expect that kind of publicity on, on this event.
Mr. Bagger.
So is my ma, motion clear that I made?
Any motion right now, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion and under discussion, I'm wondering if, if Todd, the, i- is that, no, no exception as far as, uh, if the college dorm rooms can't be obtained?
No, no exception. Whatever we need to spend to get those kids there, in, in, in my mind, if I need to alter my motion, let me know, in my mind, I'm saying, okay, right now, we're expecting to buy plane tickets, okay? It falls through on their end, we need to provide lodging, okay? We do that, but each time, okay, originally it was eight thousand, then all of a sudden we find out we need twelve thousand, well, then we go out and fundraise some more.
Yeah.
The, the principle behind it is, we will front that money, but we will always look for private donations to refund it, regardless of where it could come down. Maybe the airlines give us a discount, we don't even spend that much. But, so I, I, I'm very hesitant to put an amount on it, right, 'cause it's, it's so fluid, but let's go ahead and say whatever they need to get these kids there and get this event happening, let's go ahead and say we're willing to front that money, and then it's up to us to make sure that money's repaid, if we've gotta write checks or pound pavement, whatever we need to do. But, yes, no exceptions, Mayor.
Porter, remember-
Be sure that, Ed mentioned something about the, uh, community foundation, uh, we wanna be sure that we can give the money through somebody that's deductible, and I think that's important, so, or if we give it to the city, is that, would that be deductible?
I don't, I, you know, it's, yeah, yeah.
Probably wouldn't be, would it?
Probably not.
We need, we need to work something out with probably-
We can set up a quick account with the community foundation.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, is that we found that if, if it is funneled through a third party, it seems to be more transparent, and seems to be cleaner, I'm sure that, that, um, Mr. Sumner would love to set something up for us.
I agree.
So I, I would add that to the motion, as a, that, that a fund be set up for the income of, of, for this project.
The donations, the donations. There again, I, I'm kind of intentionally leaving my motion very broad-
Yeah.
-'cause I don't want to say, "You're gonna have to do this, you're gonna have to do this, and then that doesn't work, and then we have to come back to the council, we have to set a new motion, and then we're two weeks behind, and the next thing you know, we're a month behind, and then it's too late to plan the trip, and then we look like a donkey's rear end, because we sat up here and played politics with this thing." So let's just, if we're gonna do it, let's do it, and then let's be responsible adults and make sure it gets taken care of correctly. This is basically how I'm looking at it.
It takes about eight hours at the most to get a fund set up at the community foundation.
And, and that's something, certainly, you know, Ed or Chuck, working with, with the community foundation can get set up, so, you know, if, if you guys feel that the, the best way to route it to the third party for tax deduction-
People donate to, to the city in the past, and, and I think in some, depending upon what the donation is, and working with their accountants, I think they do get something back. But for those folks who just wanna write a check, that when you say community foundation or Rotary Foundation, these are set up, as Fava wanted to see, for that, and they get the documentation necessary, and it's very easy, simple, and I think you're right, there is a community acceptance of that, and, and a feeling that their, their monies are being handled properly, as opposed to just to the city.
And that's fine.
Post twenty-three may have one set up at the community foundation, which would be something worth checking on, if post twenty-three already had one set up through the community foundation.
Oh, good.
Maybe. I, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I know they participate and run for the money, and it has to run through there.
Yeah, it has.
Okay, all right. I can check on that tomorrow.
You see, that's an example why I'm kinda leaving it broad, 'cause right here in just thirty seconds, we've had three different ideas of where it should funnel through, so let's, let's leave it broad, let's say we're gonna do it, let's agree to do it.
So that's basically what we wanna do, is get plane tickets right now.
No, whatever they need, whatever they need. Right now, we're saying it's plane tickets, but tomorrow it could be hotel rooms, it could be meals. At the end of the day, when the money's spent, we are saying, through this motion, we are gonna be responsible for getting private donations to cover whatever is spent.
Now, with plane tickets, aren't you supposed to have ID up front?
They said up to thir, up to thirty days, uh, you know, 'cause we do this sometimes with, uh, trips back and forth with Germany, and you can get, you can get a hold and a block, I think you gotta pay a hundred dollars a ticket to hold it, and, but then the names come later, and, but I think they have to be thirty days prior to the flight.
Thirty days is the norm.
Yeah.
Again, I think they can work with you, the airline.
Yeah, yeah.
Post twenty-three does have.
They do have funds. Ash says post twenty-three has a fund.
I thought that is. Oh, good, good. Well, there is a motion and a second. Um, any other questions? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Well, we'll get this.
Get those kids out there, Chuck.
It was interesting though, that Chuck and I did, and they had, did learn from one of the older members of the directors of the American Legion, that they, when they do go on these, well, he did, uh, before, years earlier, they put three guys to a room in a, in two twin beds and a cot, and, and that's what he, they told us in the, in the, so three, when, when we said two to a room, he said three to a room, is what they did. And so, and of course, who can, who can knock them when they've been doing it for so long? So, um, anyway, it's, uh, Father's Day weekend, and it's, it's, it's about two, two and a half months away, so we knew we didn't have a lot of time. Next is item eight, is Agreement for Temporary Use of Facilities and Equipment, Gastonia Police Department Gun Range Presentation, Mayor Pro Tim Brent Craig.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. Um, this has to do with kids too, uh, just like the last thing that we just talked about. Um, this is in reference to a whole harmless agreement, uh, for the use of the Gastonia Police Range by the Young, Gaston Young Guns, uh, group, once a month, on a Saturday, from eight-thirty to twelve o'clock. Uh, the agreement is drafted for signature by locally-based Young Guns Group, as well as the USA Youth Education in Shooting Sports, a nonprofit corporation from the state of Washington that introduces and educates youth to firearm safety in shooting sports. USA Y E S S will provide insurance coverage of three million dollars and excess liability coverage of five million dollars. Um, I, I wanna thank the attorney, Mr. Ash, for, uh, putting together this whole harmless agreement. Uh, the Young Guns have a rifle team that, due to not having an air, a, a range to practice on, we're gonna have to disband. They have about twelve to fifteen, uh, young men and women that participate on this team. Uh, they shoot twenty-two rifles. They, in the agreement, uh, that you have in your agenda, it, uh, was drafted at no cost, that they would be able to use the, uh, public police range at no cost, but they prefer to pay, they pay, uh, at the rec, they pay the recreation department, right, Chuck? Yeah, they pay, uh, for the, for the use of the skeet range, so they feel like that it's only fair for them to pay for the use of the police range also. It is my understanding that a half a day at the police range is fifty dollars, and a day is a hundred dollars, okay? So, since they would be using it three and a half hours, then they would certainly prefer paying at least fifty dollars or more, whatever this council feels like would be the fair amount. Um, the coaches will be there, certified instructors will be there at all times with these, uh, uh, young men and women. Uh, they, they volunteered, the Young Guns did volunteer recently at a, uh, an event that was held at the, uh, Skeet Range, and, uh, it is my understanding that they did a very professional job, they, uh, helped, uh, instruct some of these, uh, uh, participants that were shooting at the range. So they represent Gastonia and Gaston County very well where they go. This, this agreement, basically, it's not, as, as the narrative says, it's not, it doesn't take every bit of the liability away from the city, but no, nothing that we ever do will take that total liability out of anything. The agreement also has the parents of these young gun participants, uh, sign a waiver, which is also the, the same waiver that the public that uses the police range on Saturdays, that's the only time that the public can come to the range and use it, is on Saturdays. The public has to sign this waiver, the parents of these, uh, uh, young, young children, well, not children, young adults, will also have to sign that. So I think the legal department- So I think the legal department has built in every, everything that they can build in to safeguard the city as much as possible. I know there's a risk to everything that we do, but this is a controlled environment. It will be strictly supervised. The coach of the Young Guns, Angie Fallon, Fagan, I'm sorry, is here to answer any specific questions that anybody would happen to have. But I was just concerned when, here we have young adults that express a desire to be part of a team, and we weren't able to accommodate them. And I believe it was Councilman Gallagher and I that talked to the chief after our retreat, and Councilman Gallagher really came up with the idea, what if we had a whole harmless agreement? And, and so that's how all this kind of got started, is because we felt like, or I felt like, and I think Councilman Gallagher felt like, that these individuals needed to have a place to practice, a place to where they could do what they enjoyed doing and also being part of a team. So I would make a motion that we approve the whole harmless agreement as written, except for the one point, that it will be charged, there will be a cost to it. I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second motion. Okay, discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Now, if we let them have one weekend a month, what if another group comes up and says they'd like to have a weekend a month, and another group says they want a weekend a month? What are we gonna do?
Well, according to the way the agreement is written, it's the third Saturday from eight-thirty to twelve, okay? I think that, I don't know that I can answer that question very well, but I know we have the same scheduling situation at the skeet range, and Chuck has to schedule constantly who can be on the range at a certain time. So I think this just kind of follows that same format.
Well, I'm just thinking that, not opposed, but your idea, but that other groups could come up, that have a group or form a group, and they would like to come and do that. And I don't know that we ought to just reserve for one group, one weekend a month. And if you end up doing it, could this group, without them having to join the Young Guns, but meet all the criteria? And say if there were twenty more kids that wanted to come and be part of it, could they come that Saturday morning and other kids in the, in the community come participate without being obligated to join the Young Guns? Or, I just, it really concerns me to reserve a weekend for one group, and then we're setting a precedent that, that, and another group comes up and we say, well, we can't, we gotta leave it open to the public, so we can't let you come and do that. Pretty soon, we've got all four weekends all tied up, and some months, five weekends. So that's, that's what concerns me, that we set in a precedent to do that. And I think it's good to have training and all that for firearms, and that's very important. But I just hate to, to get committed, and no matter how much whole harmless you have, the city is always, somebody gets shot in the head or something, it's always gonna be, you're gonna get sued, the city is, it's on our property, I think. Okay, that's all I have.
Yes, sir.
As far as city supervision goes, is there a city employee on range at that time that's there regardless of who or whatever group is there?
I think the chief and the range master and the assistant chief is back there. One of y'all could answer that.
Yes, we do have part-time employees that are over there and that are trained, safety employees that are there during the day, every Saturday. We, just to kind of give a little bit of a background, some time ago, the range was open to the public for four hours for the rifle range. There was talk about allowing more time for the public to use the range, and that was expanded. And it was expanded to allow four hours for rifles in the afternoons and four hours for pistols in the morning, so folks could use handguns when coming over. And that, the thought behind that was it would give the public more time to use the range, and it also could increase the revenues that come in to kind of offset the cost of the targets, building the target frames and the staff that we put over there. We still do not operate, you know, we still operate in the red every, every month, as far as the cost of running the range versus the revenue that comes in. That pistol part of it has not taken off like it was first thought. And the rifle range is still sixty-two percent of the income, but we had to add staff to have a full day over there for the public to use that. So one, one concern, and I have voiced this to Mrs. Craig, is just that this could cut into the revenue of the range, and, but she has offered to mitigate that by saying that they would pay a fee to use the range that would maybe offset the revenue that would be made if they used that morning. But we do have staffing there.
Was that Chuck?
Yeah, I just, you know, wondered how that, you know, was, if we were increasing our expense, I mean, it sounded like there's gonna be a lot of supervision there, but I always thought that there would have to be a city employee there, too, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that these kids are getting that opportunity. I think it's very important, especially at that age, if they're gonna be handling firearms, that they get the proper instruction. It sounds like this is the great way to do it. We have this range, I think it's a good idea. And I hear Councilman, excuse me, Mcateer's objections about setting a precedent, but if that were the case, then, you know, we wouldn't ever rent out picnic shelters or the boats at Rankin Lake. I mean, it's a facility we've got, and if we can use it for a good purpose, let's do it. You know, if we're never gonna set a precedent, what are we doing here? So, that's all I've got to say.
Chief, let me ask you this, well, actually, first a question for Mayor Pro Tim Craig. Brenda, how many do we think are gonna be participating in this roughly?
There's anywhere between twelve to fifteen, okay? And they shoot twenty-two rifles. They don't shoot the high-powered rifles.
And obviously, nobody's got a crystal ball, but do you think if you had this kind of carved out and it became a viable program, do you think that would positively impact the possibility of membership to the group?
Oh, I think so. I believe so. Now, you, the coach would probably be able to answer that better than I. But I think that because they haven't had a place to practice, they haven't had the interest, but they still have about twelve or thirteen that are still there, that are shooting for the Young Guns, but also are on the rifle team. So I think that it probably, most definitely, it probably would.
Okay. And Chief, this question maybe goes to you. Is another way to maybe make this a little bit more viable from a, the city's standpoint, and Chief, I don't know the answer to this, is there any type of maintenance or anything? I'm aware of what they did at the skeet range, and is there anything that, kind of, that you need a little sprucing up out there, so to speak, that maybe your personnel don't have the time to do it, but I would throw it out maybe to the Young Guns, that they could all roll their sleeves up and stuff, and maybe positively impact the environment there? What are your thoughts?
Well, you know, certainly, we have a beautiful range, and it's a range in demand, you know, it's, it's used throughout the week and on weekends. Other law enforcement agencies from around the area come in to use our range, and then, of course, we use it every year, too, or we have in the past few years for the sniper event, and put a lot of time into that, getting it looking the way it should. So there is a lot of work to be done over there, and some of the part-time staff wear a lot of hats. Not only do they operate, make sure that the range is being run safely, but they also do a lot of the maintenance-type things, cut grass, all that kind of thing as well, to make sure the range looks as it should. So there are always things to do, certainly, yeah.
I guess I would throw that back to you, for the coach, that, would that might be something that, you know, I think we could always use a little helping hand sometimes, sprucing up, and that would be, I think it would be positive responsibility aspect for the Young Guns, but also it would be demonstrative of the, what the impact is they're having to the facility.
I think that's a fabulous idea. And I'm sure that the Young Guns, they, they have a attitude, these young adults have an attitude of giving back. So I think they would probably be very, they'd be probably glad to do that.
What I'm looking at at the end of the day is, you know, how we see these signs sometimes on the side of the road, this is maintained by such and such a company. I think it might be a positive, madam, I don't know what your thoughts are, but maybe it would be a positive aspect to the, you know, to the cohesion of the group, that they could have a little spot that says, you know, maintained by the Young Guns.
I think that's fabulous.
Just kind of my comment.
I would hope that more people would, maybe more young people would join it.
I, I.
Advertise it. So they'd come out and instead of being twelve or fifteen, it'd be fifty.
We'd love it, we would love it.
Two things, would they be able to help out with the sniper conference, the Young Guns?
I think they have in the past.
Okay.
I think they have in the past, too, so that, they do whatever they're asked to do.
My dad taught me how to shoot, and it's one of the greatest things to learn, how to use a weapon, because a gun is no different than a fire axe. A fire axe is used for chopping wood, but it also could be used to hurt somebody. And that's the same thing with a weapon. Chief, one thing I just want to say is, if we're, we're running in the red with the range, we may want to look at our figures and might have to increase them to start running in the black. So if you need any help, definitely help out there.
Along Councilman Gallagher's, you know, line of thought, the question is right now, when they, when the Young Guns are using the trap and skeet range, what do they pay for?
I'm not real sure. They do it by targets, okay?
They pay like everybody else pays?
It's two dollars and fifty cents per round. They do shoot multiple rounds, and what they do is we invoice them at the end of the month when they pay.
So how do people pay at the range?
Right now, they pay, city residents pay five dollars an hour to shoot on the rifle range, ten dollars an hour if they're a non-resident. It's the same fee to shoot on the, for the pistol, except it's per half hour. Five dollars for residents and ten dollars for non-residents per half hour on the pistol range.
So we have a, you know, issue here of, you know, maintenance and expense and, you know, a group that wants to use this, that are gonna, basically, I guess, if they're on that, on that range for that three and a half hours on a Saturday morning, no one else is gonna be on that range during that time, is that correct?
Right.
So why aren't we charging them the same thing we charge the regular city residents then? I mean, we're giving them exclusive use for that time, why don't we charge them the same amount as everybody else? I mean, they're not a nonprofit group. Okay, I apologize, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
But that being said, my point is, though, is that this is a very special opportunity, and I'm not so sure why we should treat them differently than anybody else. I didn't think that we allowed other exceptions in other facilities for, I'm sure we do someplace, you know, but, you know, my point is here, is if we've got a money situation and we've got an opportunity, why don't we just, you know, have them pay like everybody else does?
Well, I think they are. The fifty dollars gives them more money than what they would have.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought we were just charging, or they were just gonna pay fifty dollars for the morning.
If I could clarify, maybe, on, on non-public days, when we lease the range out to another law enforcement agency, needs to do training or qualifications, they pay fifty dollars for a half a day or a hundred dollars for a full day to use the range, but that's not the public, that's other law enforcement agencies. Another concern, just a concern I have and just that I want to voice, is, you know, when we have other law enforcement agencies over there using the range, by state standard, there has to be one firearms instructor per six officers that are on the range. So I think it's imperative, too, that we make sure that there's proper supervision. That's a concern of mine. The last thing I'd want to be doing is standing before the council, talking about an accident that's happened at the range, because there wasn't proper supervision. And I think when we hand the range over to another group for exclusive use, then we're kind of leaving it up to them to supervise. And it's not maybe under the strict supervision that it would be on a day when law enforcement groups are over there. So I think that's important, that we have that laid out and specified as to what the supervision should be and who should be supervising. There have been concerns in the past where there were spot checks, where there weren't enough safety officers out there, or maybe not even a certified safety officer on site. And even though parents out there is one thing, I think you really need folks that are trained to be out there on the range and have a certain number of instructors per young person to make sure that they're operating safely at the range.
And I totally agree, and I would ask the coach to come up and address that, because it's my understanding that in no matter which practice they are, whether it's skeet practice or whether it's rifle practice, there's a certified instructor per so many students. So can you help me with that? Yeah, that's correct. Right now, we have four NRA-certified rifle instructors. And with twelve students, that's three per instructor. And I'm also a range safety officer, NRA-certified range safety officer.
Give your name for the.
Oh, Angie Fagan, sorry.
Is that F A G A N?
Yes.
Fagan?
Mr. Mayor, I think that we ought to get the chief to get those names, and you guarantee they're gonna be there, and let the chief be sure that these people meet his requirements. Because I don't think you ought to make any exceptions for your group under any circumstances. And so I'd like to, would it be all right to get the chief to get their names and make sure they're there, because you're on our range and we're gonna be liable. I don't know if you're. NRA, I've been a member of NRA forty years, and I think I'm paid up to two thousand twenty-one, I guess, my rifle magazine's come up on, but I don't trust anybody a hundred percent when it comes to liability to the city. We could get sued, and I worry about that. So could we?
Oh, I don't think that would be an issue.
Be a requirement.
No, she's got, I mean, you know, the Young Guns have all that information, and we'll be glad to share it with anybody that would like to have it.
You require that they be there, yeah.
Yes, sir. I think I might, drawn on my experience, I might want to qualify that a little bit, Chief. I'm not sure that you're specifically concerned with who the people are by given name, but rather what their specific qualifications are, that they're maintained on file, and that there is a specific sign-in, sign-out sheet of the, of the certified qualified range masters that are there. Am I correct? And Ash, is that something we can put, we can write into the addendum to the, to the standard that the chief establishes, X number with the qualification that you established that you want to see there? Could that be put in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I mean, NRA-certified.
Whatever, Chief, whatever, whatever standard you would, you would deem necessary for that range.
I just don't want to make it so encumbrousome that they can't use the range. I mean, there's four guys out there that are probably, I know one of them is a retired police officer, and if you're NRA-certified, I know that you know weapons, you know how to use them properly and safely, and you could definitely teach someone, and if you have four individuals out there, and there's twelve kids, that's three per adult that is NRA-certified, so.
I think the important thing, and I think you stated very well, the important thing is that we do have safety officers that are trained and certified out there on the given day. What we don't want to happen is, with the best intentions, four people were supposed to be there, but a couple can't make it, and now we have, you know, twenty children out there shooting with only two instructors trying to oversee it because somebody couldn't make it on a Saturday. That's what I want to avoid, is that type of situation happen.
We lease, is that the right term, the range to other groups, correct?
They pay a fee to use the.
Whatever, but their safety. The college has a building out there, too. Correct. But what I'm saying is, I keep hearing, well, we need to make sure we're doing this, we need to make sure we're doing this, we need to make sure we're doing this. There's already precautions and safety measures in place, is there not?
There are safety rules.
So if, if we abide by those, I mean, are we suggesting that, because this is the Young Guns, we want to make it stricter and harder? I mean, if we've already got safety measures in place, we need to abide by those, just like we do for every other group, they're already in place, they're in place for a reason, and that's for safety. So I think if we're gonna allow this group to come in and use this range, they need to follow those safety guidelines.
So I think if we're gonna allow this group to come in and use this range, they need to follow those safety guidelines. I don't think there should be any exceptions, but I don't think we should be making any additional ones.
Certainly, we have, uh, Mr. Chrisaw, we have four safety personnel that are out there at the range now for the ten stations when folks are shooting. Uh, you know, the folks that are with the young guns now could come out there on a given Saturday, and they've had the safety class, and they're under the watchful eye of a guardian or parent, you know? And they, they, they could shoot right now on Saturday. They could come out there under our watch and shoot right now, as it stands. I think the difference is, is they're asking for exclusive use of the range, where they're not under the supervision of our staff that's out there. They want to kind of do their, their own thing, that's maybe different than what we do on a normal Saturday. And so that's where it changes a little bit.
But I'm saying we do that for other groups too, don't we?
Well, when, when another law enforcement group comes out there, they bring firearms instructor, or they arrange for our firearms instructors to be a part of that. So that's actual firearms instructors that are overseeing that operation, not just an NRA safety officer. That's an actual someone that's a certified firearms instructor.
We're also NRA certified, uh, rifle instructors. We've had training and been certified by that.
Okay.
It's not that we don't want, you know, your range safety officer out there, we don't have a problem with that at all.
Well, if, if they are, I mean, if they're gonna pay the fee, that helps offset the employee, right? The, the city employee, part-time employee, to be there.
Revenue that's brought in on Saturday from the public shooting is used towards the cost of operating the range.
Right, right. So, but what I'm saying is that, say, they're out there, and, and I don't see it as an exclusive, right? I see it as an allotted time for that, that fixed income. Because some Saturdays, we don't cover our expenses, right? Okay, so if every third Saturday, we know we've got a fixed income of fifty dollars or more, whatever that number comes up to be, then that's gonna cover, help cover some of your range costs. Whereas if they're not there, you might not get anything in that morning, right?
There's some words we do rather than others, yes.
Yes, okay, all right.
Okay.
And they have their own insurance, which is, um, combined single limit, not less than three million dollars, and excess liability insurance of aggregated amount of each occurrence limited to not less than five million dollars. And that's their own insurance, not ours. Thank you.
Yeah, my reading, my reading of this and my understanding would be that even though they, you, the, the, the young guns would have the exclusive use of this, they would still be under the provisions of this contract. And the range safety officer, who will be out there, period, there, if they see something that's unsafe, they are in charge. If they, if another police department comes out to our range and our range officer's there, and they're doing something that's not right, our range officer is in charge. I believe that's, and that's the way it's in the Army too. It, it doesn't matter what your rank is, once you go on to a range, the range, the, the director of the range is in charge. Because any organization, any organization can have a, a day where something's not going right. And so it is the, we operate the range. This is a way that this is established, but the, the standards that are established by the chief and, and in ranges, they need to be established for this group and any group, and it would be similar. And, uh, so I'm, I think that's gonna also be here. I'm glad to hear it's, they're twenty-two rifles. You may want to even put that in here, that, that makes a lot, high-powered rifles have a whole nother level of seriousness with it. So, you know, I think it'd be good to actually put that in, in this document as well.
Mayor. So, so the primary issue here is, is safety, and that is what I'm hearing. So, um, the question is, is, you know, does this document reflect the fact that, you know, they're gonna be supervised on this premises at, on a Saturday morning in the same fashion as other law enforcement, um, you know, groups are? And, and if, if this document reflects that, so that, you know, whoever is running the range that day says, okay, you have twelve people here, you have two certified people, let me see your cards. Go shoot. Is that gonna be how that would work, chief?
I, I don't know that we can say that, Dr. Curlin, because all of those are law enforcement agencies that all have public immunity. They all have, you know, insurance as law enforcement agents. You know, this agreement, you know, I, I crafted it as best I could, trying to contemplate the aspect of minors participating in, you know, firearm exercises with certified instructors, but nevertheless trying to provide as much coverage as possible. But I don't know that it's an apples-to-apples comparison with other law enforcement agencies using our range, because, you know, there are all kinds of different insurances and government immunities for law enforcement officers who are actively employed by local governments when they're using a, a target.
Well, I, I, the intent of this is good, but I think the devil's in the details, as it always is. And I think we have to have a comfort level between the chief, you know, and the city, and, you know, our protection. And as much as you can have all this insurance in the world, it doesn't matter, the city's gonna get named every time, okay? And they're gonna go after us like anybody else. So I don't care, you know, how much insurance is in there, the city gets named, okay? So, so the only thing we can do to protect us is to make sure we have the safety measures in place to make this happen. Now, the fifty bucks or whatever, it's, it's not that important. But I think they should be paying something, because they are gonna have, you know, not allowed other paying customers to, to frequent the facility at that time. But I really think, I, I can't vote for this until there's a comfort level between what the chief feels is the proper supervise, supervision, um, for the type of individual that's gonna shoot, you know? And I don't care if it's, you know, one per four, one per six, but somebody's gotta come up with something that they're gonna stick their neck out on, because I'm not gonna stick my neck out until somebody sticks their neck out.
Right. I feel the same way.
I thought I was in here. What, what was in here, Mr.?
How much supervision?
No, there's not.
No.
Unless I've misread this, it talks about supervision, but it says, it doesn't say how much supervision.
That, that was my point, is having the chief matrix what the accepted standards are at our range to integrate that into this contract. And then, for example, as, as you kind of indicated, chief, if two people booked off sick and didn't come that, instructors didn't come that day, then we either need to reduce the amount of participants, or we need to call that day.
That's right.
And, and that, I think that's kind of.
But that's not in there.
Right, but none of that's, none of that's in there.
I, I know that specific language is not written into the contract, but the contract is just for the young guns to use the facility. It was my understanding that those are rules of the facility, are they not? You have to have so many, was it certified instructors per so many shooters?
Six.
One per.
And the contract says you're gonna use the facility and abide by the facility rules. So if that's the facility rule, then you have to abide by it. That, that was the point I was making before, there are facility rules in place for safety. This contract says we're gonna allow them to use our facility, and they have to follow the facility rules.
Yeah, I, I, I'm just not sure if, if there's a comfort level of, you know, making sure that they're, that, what they are and that they're abided by, and I don't think it would hurt us to spell them out, is what my feeling is.
I, I don't understand spelling out. If you have facility rules, they're facility rules.
Well, at the back of this, this is the facility ru, on page, exhibit eight-ten. It's got range safety rules. Okay? Now, all of this is, you know, is in the agenda, and it's, I think it is pretty well, uh, spelled out. It says the range commands and controls must be abated at all times. Y'all can read that, okay? Uh, now, uh, chief, you probably know these better than I do. So maybe you can point out the ones that relate to what comfort level that some of us need to have.
Can we just bring it back next time with, with the, with the addition?
I think that kind of sees in the start, unless you.
Well, yes, I mean.
No, it doesn't say anything about supervision.
It doesn't say anything about supervision in here.
Well, this is the rules, right? And the waiver is also in here. So if the rules aren't. There you go, okay.
Mayor, council, I appreciate it. My name's Paul Smith, I'm actually a sergeant here with the City Gas Storm Police Department. I'm actually the range master here at the range. I think what we're running into here is, we're running into two different identities here. You've got police and law enforcement agencies that's using the range, and then we have the public day, which is totally different. Uh, on public day, we have four range attendances out there that's making sure that everything is done as we want them to and according to normal standards, guidelines through NRA, that type of deal. The law enforcement agencies in, in general have a code or a commission that requires them to have a certain number of instructors per student. It's not a range, if you will, per se, it's law enforcement commission that makes us do that. And those guidelines require us to have those. If we have one to six, we have to have one instructor. If I have seven people there, I have to have two instructors, okay? So that's how that works. And when you start talking about the public side, that, that's an individual using a weapon with us having our range people there making sure it happens. So it's two different things. And so when you start looking at, you know, the range rules in general, yeah, there's a general practice that you see here, like you're talking about the range rules itself. But the things you gotta be concerned with is, there's particulars in the details, like you're saying, that's not out there on the public side, because this is gonna be an adventure that we have not done on the public side. Our public day is just public day individuals, not groups. So this is an adventure that we're gonna have to take, if we take it, for a first time, kind of view.
Okay, let me ask a question, uh, Mr. Mayor. Okay, say, they're there, the young guns are there.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, they have their instructors, okay? Uh, and, but you will also have your safety instructors there also, right?
It depends. Yes, ma'am, I would suggest that we definitely have a minimum of at least one.
Right, okay.
Because that's the way we normally, we always do that, even with law enforcement agencies. Even if they have an instructor, we always have a city employee on site.
Right, right. Okay, and, and, and I agree with that.
And we would want you there, because if there is a violation of someone doing something that they shouldn't be doing, or if there is just one adult, and there's twelve kids out there running around with a rifle. I mean, that's, that's one of the things that we'd, you know? But one of the things I guess has to be nailed down is, um, how many people that need to be there? Is that it? How many, uh, young, the, young guns is saying that they're gonna bring four adults to every twelve children. So that's three.
Right.
Per adult. Which is much better than.
As long as there's a city instructor also overseeing the bigger picture, okay? And, let me ask a question. Since some of this has come up after the, the agreement has been put in the agenda. Did y'all review this? Did the, 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 uh, police department chief and whoever else, did y'all review this before it was put in here? Okay, so you were okay with it when, when it was put in, in our agenda? I mean, because I don't see any of those questions.
This, I, this wasn't discussed at the last department head meeting, this was put into the agenda later. Uh, this, this came into the agenda later, so I've been talking with staff the last few days about, uh, what this is and what concerns there are and making sure. Because ultimately, you know, ultimately, we want to run a safe range, and, and we don't want there to be any accidents out there. And even when you have law enforcement officers out there that are trained, you have firearms instructors working with them, you can have accidents, and there have been accidents. Uh, but we certainly don't want an accident with a child. And like I said before, my, my goal here is not to be against this program or against this group by any means. I've been an advocate for young people throughout my career, have a history for that. But I don't want to be standing here either explaining why something happened, because we didn't have proper supervision out there. So that's, that's my goal, is just to make sure we're running a safe range, and that if we have a group like this coming over and are approved to use it, that we don't, that we do everything we can to safeguard from having an accident.
I, I suggest if, if, if your, your general rules is that you have, for law enforcement officers who are, you know, training other officers, you have a ratio of one to six, correct? Okay. Well, now we have, you know, uh, students who are younger, who may not have as much experience, but are, again, responsible. But I would think if the young guns are suggesting that they would have four adults per twelve, then we put it in writing that there is a ratio of one to three. And it's real simple. The, whoever the range master is, or the per, person in charge that day, you have a sign-in sheet, you have all the names on the sign-in sheet, you have a sign-in sheet for the certified people. If you have them on record and you've already certified them, you don't have to see their card again. But if there's somebody different, you show them a card, you got one to three, go shoot. You have one, less than one to three, then shoot it out who's going home.
I'd like to ask the coach to come back up here. Can the young guns rifle team agree to that, what, uh, Councilman Curlin just said?
Yes, and believe me, our gas and young guns' top priority is safety. I would not ever be involved with them if I didn't think. I'm certainly not gonna put my, you know, house and be sued and everything on the line just to go out there and do whatever. I mean, it's, it's not like that, of course. But yeah, we don't have a problem with any of this. The ratio with the city range officer there, that, that's all fine. We want safety just as much as, as y'all do. I mean, we have just as much to lose as the city would if, if something were to happen. And we always operate with that at the forefront. And like you say, if there's only three, then what we normally do is if we have more, then they have to take turns. There's never, the ratio is not gonna be changed, just because somebody can't be there. Then, you know, who's on the line and allowed to shoot at a time would still, you know, adhere to the ratio.
Mr. Mayor, I tried to put in the agreement above eight dash two that, you know, the LSCs will fully comply with any and all security policies and procedures established by the city as the city deems necessary and appropriate for the public health, safety, and welfare. Now, if council doesn't want to approve this agreement tonight without this procedure that's been described, spelled out, then, you know, we can bring it back and put that in it specifically. Or the council can pass this agreement tonight with directions to the staff, specifically the chief of police, that he is to write and memorialize Mr. Dr. Curlin's statements in writing and any other safety precautions he wants, and that when it's tendered to the young guns, they will comply with it, because that, that is what my intent was in that portion of the contract. But if you want it spelled out, then it will have to be revised and come back.
We have a motion to second about a while back. Is there, if there's no other discussion, uh, I, we have to vote on that, so, uh, we'll, we'll just go ahead and vote.
Do we amend the motion to accept the additional, whatever you said? Pass it and then, then add that with what needs to be done?
Are you adding that to the motion?
Because I made the motion.
Are you adding that to the motion?
I'm adding that to the motion.
And who seconded? You second that amendment?
I second that again.
Okay, so what Dr. Curlin described in terms of the procedure, the ratio, the form, the, the police chief will need to reduce that all to a memo and any other requirements that he wants for safety. Would council like to have a copy of that after the police chief memorializes that? Okay, we'll see, we'll see to it, that you get that.
And clarified it's twenty, there are twenty-two rifles too.
And we'll have that in, right in there.
No thirty-five sixes or high-powered rifles.
Okay, what we'll do at this time is vote on that motion. All in favor, raise your hands.
I think this hits the target. I think this hits the target.
Okay. You old son of a gun, okay. All opposed. I did get that out. Okay, we're moving along. You on a roll, keep going here. Item nine, the Facilities Management Committee Meeting Report Presentation, Mayor Prokén, Brenda Craig.
There really isn't anything new to report in reference to the conference center. The summary of the meeting is on exhibit nine-dash-one. I'm sure you all probably read that. that, and the item number two was Don Barkley requested to speak to the committee on the Greenway, and we referred that to the transportation committee, and that's the end of my report, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I bet Don wasn't that fast.
No, he wasn't.
All right. Out of ten, is appointment of a second alternate to the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency Number One Commission and Rate Committee, Mr. Munn, is the motion on the floor.
And I think, I think a second would work.
It works, too. All right, motion and second, and is any discussion, all in favor of the motion, it is.
Mayor, can, while we're on the, on alternate, and it doesn't need to be voted on right now, but for the MPO, Dr. Curlin and I serve on the MPO, that's two votes, neither one of us has an alternate registered or listed with the MPO. So if either one of us miss, even if somebody else from the council shows up and votes, it doesn't count because they are not our listed alternate. So, this just kinda jogged my memory when I saw that, if we could be thinking about that, we need two alternates. I know Dr. Curlin and I make every effort, and I think between the two of us, we've only missed two meetings over the whole span of everything, so it's very rare and not very often that we have to miss, but if we do, we're losing a vote because we do not have an alternate.
There, it, it's one of the most important committees we have, and also the state has played, levied that requirement on everybody that is on that board, you have to fill out the ethics. And so that, that is something that, that you have to, not only can you just appoint somebody, then the person then has to go through that, that ethics form.
So I, I just wanted to make that known, that we are serving without alternates, and that's probably not a good thing, so, just for informational purposes, thank you.
Well, I would have, I mean, I served on theirs at one point in time, and I resigned because of the ethics thing, and I don't have anything against the ethics thing, but it was just a little bit more than I thought was necessary at a local level. It was a principal issue with me more than anything else. So, if, if they had done away with that, then I would certainly volunteer to do that, but since that is still part of the process of being on the MPO, then, I'm sorry, because it is one of the most important things that go on.
No, it, it's fine, I just wanted to make it known that we have no alternates, it doesn't have to be resolved tonight.
Well, we, maybe the next meeting, if someone wants to, if there's someone, probably tell y'all.
Yeah, if there's anyone that's interested, we'd be glad to buy whatever.
People's to go on the after-city board.
The ethics, mm-hmm. Okay, we'll cover that. City attorney's report, item 11.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's late, but I just wanted to go over one report and one little story. The report is we've been sued by a lady named Joan Meinke. She fell going down the steps at the Arts on Main, okay? And of course, we have a contract with Arts on Main that says they'll have insurance and they'll defend us for anything that happens. We've tendered that to them and their insurance care has refused because they say she fell on the steps and the steps are a physical element of the building and we own the building and it's our fault. So we're in the middle of that right now. So sometimes having insurance and having a requirement that you indemnify the city and defend the city works out, sometimes it doesn't. This is a situation where we're fussy and fighting. We had a situation with the Grizzlies where a guy named Daryl Bryson was at the bullpen, he got hit by a ball thrown by the Mustangs, clearly, there was nothing physical about Sims Legion Park that caused that, the Grizzlies accepted liability for that, they defended it, and they actually won that lawsuit. But we did have to get an attorney to monitor it and we did have to spend some money. So I just wanted to, to share those two things with you. Mr. Munn and I are gonna sit down with some folks from the Art Guild. One of the things, one of the issues we've had with Arts on Main the whole time is who's in charge, you know, and who's gonna accept responsibility for, for that, for that...
Yeah, remember, our contract really was with the Arts Council, and then when the Arts Council withdrew and, you know, like...
And left Gastonia for Holly.
And left Gaston, yeah. Then the Art Guild has, has put that together, they're a group of volunteers, and there's new leadership there now, and I think they wanna structure a new lease, they, they've restructured some of the, like, their gift shop is in a different location, so they're trying, but they're a very small little organization.
They're very thinly capitalized.
Yes.
That's my report, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, city manager's report.
We, we did receive the bids for Tiptman Road today, and, and I think they were favorable, so that's good for us going forward. We, the dates for the downtown concerts are here, so it's time to get excited about all of that. Tomorrow night, we have a budget, there are budget outlook session, it, and it's, it's gonna be basically positive information pretty much all across the board. So, look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow night, and if you have any questions ahead of the meeting that you have, please let me know or Melody know, and we could do some research and, and answer those for you. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. City council report, Ms. Gray.
Uh, just a happy birthday, a belated birthday to Councilman Pierceall. I hope you enjoyed your day yesterday and wonderful.
I would make a motion, we sing. Do I have a, do I have a second?
No, 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 no. We're not singing.
I attended the Chamber Loray opening.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, are you okay, Mr. Mayor?
The chair did it, I didn't. No, it's not rocking, and so, but then it's the wrong thing, it went that way. I'm sorry, go ahead.
The Chamber Loray opening, and it was a wonderful event, and Loray looks great, all I heard was how wonderful this, this is, and, and so it was, it was a nice event, and that's my report.
Your report.
Your report.
Two items, one, last night it went to Melvin Burris, the fire, fireman, he's having the hoops thing going on over at Irwin Center this whole week, which is really nice because it gives the kids a place to go during Easter break here. And there were a lot of little kids playing basketball, full-court basketball. I was impressed. And Chief, there were, the firemen were out there, and I appreciate that, they were in the building, they were outside also, and the police presence was there as well. It was great. If you get a chance, stop by, championship games are Friday, even though Duke won yesterday. Let me see, go Duke. I did some ice skating this past two weeks here in Gastonia, at Bradley Methodist Church in the west side of town off of Franklin. They put up a skating rink.
Really?
And a bunch of kids out there, it was a lot of fun, I could not believe I was skating right next to Franklin Boulevard when it was warm out, but it was an eventful time. And that is my report.
Mr. Colonel?
I can't top that, I have no report.
Wait, 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 wait. You do have one thing to say, Dave. Grandpop?
I was gonna say...
Well, I'm gonna be a grandfather, that is true, October 22nd. But I, I didn't really do a whole lot with that.
Yeah, right?
You will.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
You stole them and give them back, okay? That's, that's the rule. Okay, Mr. Kim?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to say that I'm, I'm real happy and proud. My wife Lori was chosen as this year's face of hope for the Gaston County Cancer Services. They're having their gala, it's their main fundraiser, April 24th, Ten Kataba in Belmont. Means a lot of different things. One of the biggest things is that Cancer Services, folks, all the money stays right in the county. It's not something where half of it's mailed away, then you find out that they have a jet and everything else. This is folks attending, helping folks that are gonna be in need, and we never know when that's gonna be. Second thing, Ed, and Flip, I, I think that we maybe need for our next transportation meeting, let's look at a U-turn prohibition at the corner of Red Bud and South New Hope. We have some folks that it, it seems to be getting more predominant, people pulling out of the Walmart, they go up to the traffic light and they try and make a U-turn, and the vehicle is too big, so then they have to stop and back up.
Red Bud? Right there, New Hope, bad.
Yeah, it, it seems to be getting more prevalent, you know, when they pull out of the, they pull out, like, they should go straight, but they wanna go back the other way on Red Bud, and they try and go around the island, and the vehicle doesn't fit, so then they have to back up, and it's right in the middle of an intersection. So I think that just a, a simple no U-turn will suffice there.
Sure, right, because the safe, the safe move is, is the other driveway out.
But they're not taking that.
They're not, okay.
All right, last thing, we got some exciting news. I believe Conn's, the Conn's appliance store is gonna be opening up real soon, and we have the operations manager here and the audience, Daniel, what time, when are we gonna, when are we gonna have that?
We're gonna be opening up this Friday at 10 o'clock, this will be our soft opening, and then April the 18th will be random, so as far as, I was out there at 4 o'clock this morning moving product into the building, so we're on track of meeting our opening date this Friday.
You look pretty chipper for being out there at 4 o'clock in the morning.
Lots of coffee and drinks, amazing thing.
We're glad you're here. I mean, you and the...
The last thing is, many times we get, in, from the, whatever religious organization we belong to, we get urgent prayer requests, and I would like to put one out to this body. There's a police officer named John Moynihan, his, he actually saved the lives of several people that were bleeding very badly after the bombing at the Boston Marathon. He was invited down to the White House, and President Obama gave him one of the top cop awards for the United States. March 28th, on a routine road stop, he was shot in the face, and he's been in a coma ever since. And things, they don't know whether he's gonna pull through or not, and I would ask that we all say a, a silent prayer for Officer John Moynihan of the Boston PD through his work and his, for his family as well. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think everything's been covered, if there's nothing else, we'll, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion here, sir.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow night.
Yeah.